Chairman, you want to announce?
Yeah, we have two new members coming out to the Planning Board, and our mayor's going to swear them in at this time.
I like that, I like the man. No, that's okay. He's good. Yes, it is. Yes, better, no.
I, Thomas Graziano.
I, Thomas Graziano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
To the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I, Thomas Graziano.
I, Thomas Graziano.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Planning Board.
Of the office of Planning Board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, we have a member who's going to serve as an alternate of mine when I'm not present, taking my seat on the planning board. I, state your name.
I, Frank Zengary.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
Into the governments established in the United States.
Into the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I, state your name.
I, Frank Zengary.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform all the duties.
And justly perform all the duties.
Of the office of Planning Board.
Of the office of Planning Board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
The meeting is called to order. Please all stand for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, we have some changes to the agenda tonight. Our attorney, I'm announcing for you.
We have Bootables LLC, 378 Main Street. That's going to be adjourned. The notice will be carried, and we'll have it at the next meeting in February 14th. Anybody here for that purpose, it will not be heard tonight. In addition to that, we have 705-757 Main Street. That also, that request for adjournment will be granted, and the notice will carry to the next meeting, February 14th. Anyone here for that purpose, it will not be heard this evening. Thank you.
Can you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised according to the sunshine law.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Beniro.
Here.
Mr. Melham.
Here.
Mr. Zengary.
Here.
Mr. Condi.
Here.
Mr. Vanda.
Here.
Mr. Bowles.
Here.
Mr. Corvo.
Here.
Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Guaman.
Here.
Ms. Rico.
Here.
Mr. Novarado.
Here.
Mr. Sinabria.
Mr. Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Tabito.
Here.
Can I have a motion for the approval in a minute for the December 13th, 2018 meeting?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Melham.
Abstain.
Mr. Condi.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Corvo.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Abstain.
Ms. Guaman. And Mr. Novarado, abstain.
Chairman's comments. I assume you have a large crowd tonight. Anybody have any questions during the meeting? We'll take your questions in an orderly fashion, and everyone will have a chance to be heard. Correspondents and payment of bills, if any questions or comments. If not, we have applications before the board. We have a preliminary investigation to determine whether the properties commonly known as 78-102 Washington Avenue, block 8503, lots 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, 75-77 Williams Street, block 8503, lot 11, and 74 Washington Avenue, block 8503, lots 4 and 5, should be designated as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dean Donatelli. For the record, I'm the special redevelopment council for the township. As the chairman mentioned, this is a step in the redevelopment process, the preliminary investigation. It's basically following up on the direction given by the council, to have the properties, property be studied to determine whether it meets the criteria for a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. The council made that direction to the planning board on November 27, 2018. The local redevelopment housing law required that there be a public hearing on the process. Public notice of this hearing was made, published, and served in accordance with the local redevelopment housing law. After this hearing, the planning board will, as you know, the board will make a recommendation to the council as to whether the property meets the criteria in the local redevelopment housing law. The main purpose of this hearing is to determine that question, does it meet the criteria of the statute. One minor note, which the planners will introduce, will tell you that this property that the board knows was studied last year. This is, a new study was prepared, additional lots were incorporated into the study, and the planners will make the presentation for your consideration. Marian Gucci Carter is with CME. She is the township and planning board banners. She's going to make her presentation on the preliminary investigation.
Can I get to that? I have to place you on the floor. Okay? Let's go over there again, please. Please, say, build truth, hold truth, and help, and help you God. State your name and spell your name, please. Marian Gucci B U C C nine, I think, C A R T B Y. Name is Marian, please. N A R Y A N M. Thank you. Is this my mic, or do I just talk loud?
Just talk loud.
Okay. All right, that's not one of my tests. Okay. So, since I don't know you, CME has worked for the township before and done some planning presentations, but I am new, so I want to introduce myself. My background is a master's of city and regional planning. I started out with the Hackensack Development Commission in the 80s, and for 27 years I was with Jersey City planning, and I worked as a planner for the city, handling reviews for the planning board, and for the board adjustment, and writing redevelopment plans, and doing studies just like this. I retired from there, beginning of this year, and was recruited by Rutgers to teach their planning and design studio, for their seniors, and also by CME, to continue basically doing what I did at Jersey City. And I'm enjoying it a lot, and I really like Bellville. And I'll start out with the presentation, with a little discussion. The benefit of Jersey City's experience, I think, is that I got a chance to see a lot of applications. And not just see the applications, but in Jersey City, a lot of those things got built. So, we got to see what we did that worked, and what we did that didn't work. And so, that, I think, gave, gave me a lot of insight on what's really needed, and some of sometimes the best ways to go forward. So, what I want to start out with this type of hearing is usually what happens, and many of board members will know, but since it's for testimony, and I want to make sure that the record is clear, I'm going to go a little slow, and I'm going to do a little punch list of exactly what you're being asked to do tonight. So, the role of the planning board in this particular hearing, in this case, is a unique, it's probably one of the most unique roles that the board has. It's to undertake the investigation, and the responsibilities to have the hearing, and make a recommendation to the governing body. And it's very limited in that scope, and that is what it is for. I think in the report, and it was already, it was also identified by council, that there were two authorizations by the governing body to study this property. One in February 2017, and one again in November 2018. The one in February was for one property, lot 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, and the one in November 2018, it expanded that study area to include lot 11 and lot 45. And the authorization was specific to undertake a statutory preliminary investigation to determine whether the area meets the statutory criteria necessary to be determined, and area needs redevelopment, non-condemnation. The notice is very specific, it says twice in the local newspaper, once at least 10 days before, goes to the city clerk, goes to the county planning board, and is available for public review, so that people can see this and read this, and ask questions about it after hearing. The difference is, really, the, why, why I spent the time saying that, is because this role focuses only on the condition of the land. It doesn't focus on what typically planning boards do. It doesn't focus on development, site plan, design, potential site plan, potential uses, potential assessments, value, doesn't touch on any of those. In fact, those items shouldn't be discussed in this hearing, because they're not wanted to be the role of the board under the statute. So, only the condition of the land, everything else is an aside, and it's hard for board members, especially if they're new and they haven't seen these cases, and especially hard for people in public who are attending, to switch gears and stop talking about that, because that's really the primary role of the planning board. This is different. Planning board functions under the police power granted by the municipal land use law, but under this role, it functions under the police power of the local redevelopment housing law. And that law doesn't include the board, the mayor, and a power that the land use law does. It is very specific on what the function is for this board, for this hearing. And so, the power here, and the basis for decision, very limited, look at the conditions only, evaluate the state criteria for studies that the site complies with that criteria, and then recommend to the council whether it can be used in the redevelopment. So, if the site exhibits those conditions, the role of the board, you could recommend that it can be used that way. It's up to the council to make that decision. That's the limited scope of this hearing. The other things that I think are very important, and it kind of gives a little more insight on the redevelopment law that you'll be working under tonight. So, the law was created to aid local municipalities in eliminating lighter conditions. The sign of that, I guess, is that it really gives localities the ability to do what it takes to fix things, to make things better, and to use all the tools at their disposal to do that. So, I'm going to read a piece of this law. Not celebrating the legalese, but I am reading specific language from the purpose of the law. It says, "In various communities, there exists and persists to exist conditions of deterioration which result from forces which are amenable to correction and mere, amiable elimination by concerted effort of a reasonable public effort, and without this public effort are not likely to be corrected or ameliorated by private effort." And that is the reason for this law. It says, "When things don't happen on their own." And from my understanding, from one of the things I've learned about this site, there was a site plan approval, or a site and use variance approval back in 2005. This still didn't happen. It's a perfect example of something not happening on its own. And there may be lots of different reasons, but regardless, it is really the, I don't want to say the duty of, but it's the, it's the reason why council like that and get involved in this law is invoked, to make things happen in a positive way. Because the longer conditions that are negative exist, they start to expand and harm other properties around them. And this is another perfect example of that. This study area expanded, because the site sat in a bad condition for a very long time, and now has expanded to the sites on either end. So, the law is a legislative effort to assist local governments to be responsible to arrest and reverse these lighting conditions. And so, we take a look, the reasonable steps to authorize the study because it appeals to be properly qualified. So, I think the report that was circulated, the report that you have, the report that was on file with the township concludes that the property does exhibit the conditions that meet the statutory criteria, and can be recommended to the council for consideration for. So, the other thing that I want to point out, that I think is significant, you probably know this, I would say this for public benefit, is that what distinguishes specifically when there will be condemnation or no condemnation. And in this particular recommendation, redevelopment does not need to come into the domain, and that is not the case here, it wouldn't be permitted, it wouldn't be authorized, and it couldn't even happen by an amendment to this action. The whole process would have to start over again. So, the state law changed and made it so that the designation of condemnation or non-condemnation is done at the very beginning, and you can't just go and amend it. If you want to make it condemnation, you have to come back, start from square one, have a planning board hearing, do a public notice, and keep up the process. So, this proposal is for non-condemnation designation. It's to take the action that state law allows to improve the property. It's not going to take the property from the current owners. It can't, no one can. They get to develop them as they want and sell them as they want. And that is what's before you today. The other item that's significant is, I think, because I think we found it very useful in Jersey City, is that the benefit, one of the benefits of this designation is that it takes zoning, and allows the zoning to be customized later on. So, any future development of an area in redevelopment, the township gets to be very specific on what they want built, and the people who build there don't get to ask for variances, for devariances, for used variances. So, that's the kind of, that's why they say so effective, and that's why it's so useful, and that's why it has helped communities across the state. Jersey City, for example, when I started there in 1990, they had many waterfront redevelopment plans, but they didn't have a whole lot of other planning in context of the neighborhood. And that slowly changed over time. I think they're an extreme example, but they have 50% of their land in redevelopment area, partly because they get to control what's happening there, and they get the product that they want, especially if they're going to be reviewing buildings that are high rises and those things, they want to make sure they get exactly what they want. You get to get exactly what you want in an area that's designated in any redevelopment, and it also only stays before the planning board. The planning board is the body that reviews projects within the study area of redevelopment. It can't go to board adjustment, as long as it's, if it's looked at, and if the plan for zoning is adopted, it's not an overlay, but as a regular zoning replacement, which you have the authority to do, it only goes to the planning board. So, with that, I'll try and run through the plan, which is statutory that I have to do, but I think what, what the report does is identify the criteria which each site meets. In preparing the report, we looked at the official zoning maps, the tax records, areas' photographs, ownership and sales information, township master plan, zoning map, and more than. I could talk about the characteristics of the site. I don't have to, but I can. Everyone here knows the site very well. So, the site, the main vacant lot has a small building on it. It has been vacant for quite some time, and it's in, it's in rough shape. It's unsafe to walk on, it's unsafe to walk past. The pavement is broken, there's a lot of trash. The building itself qualifies as a building, but it's not usable, it's not habitable in any way, and there's no facilities, sort of utilities on the site. The other, the site next door, which is a new site that was added on lot 11, lot 11 has a vacant industrial building, one story, that it has signs of disrepair. There's rust on the doors and windows. It's obviously also been unused for a while. The third property is a mixed-use property with retail ground floor and two residents above, and it looks like it has been recently improved and recently received tenant. Surrounding land uses are variable. There is the uses of old Washington, which is mixed-use commercial residential. To the east of the site, past the industrial apartments, is more industrial property, very small-scale industrial property. And transportation, access to the site, there's a basta immediately in front of the site, and it has local transportation through bus line number 13. There's no environmental constraints that were found, and the zoning for the area is now BG, like I said. So, the one thing that I'd like to point out is that the previous use of the site on lot 6 is used as a car dealership, and that was not permitted. It's not a permitted use for the BG district either, so any future continuation, even though it has stopped, there wouldn't be a, be a huge continuation of that use. The master plan, that was updated in 2018. It notes that there is a need for revitalization of this property, so the master plan and the recommendation of redevelopment of this property is consistent with the master plan as well. For the statutory criteria, it stated that lot 6, the vacant car dealership lot, meets criteria A, B, D, and H. That is, the buildings are generally substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, obsolete, and possess characteristics that are lacking in light airspace, and not conducive to wholesome living or working conditions. That building is not conducive to any working conditions. The rest of the character of the site meets criteria B as well, because it has been allowed to fall into a state of disrepair, where it is untenable, and is starting to affect surrounding properties in a negative way. It affects the whole community, and it's something that should be corrected. It also meets criteria D, where it becomes detrimental for the health, safety, and welfare of your community as well. When, when properties sit like this, they do have a negative impact on more than, it's more than just a visual impact, it's a detriment for investment and for safety, and it really does harm the community. Site 11, meets criteria B, as it is untenable, entirely for sale and vacant. The characteristics that are particular to the buildings and to the sites are listed in detail in the report in the local department here. Everyone does know them. There are pictures of the site in the report that show the details and reflect the conditions. And then there's one, what I want to focus on also is site 4, which is a little different. Site 4, lot 4, rather, is included in the redevelopment area, and the plan shows and concludes that it does not meet the criteria. But the statute, the housing law, addresses properties within the study area that does not meet the criteria. It specifically speaks to that, and I'll read that because I want to make it absolutely clear why it's in there. A redevelopment area may include land, buildings, or improvements, which by themselves are not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, but the inclusion of which is to be necessary with or without change in their condition, or the effect of redevelopment of the area of which they don't part. This site is immediately next to a very large retail parking lot and facility, and it is, it is a three-story structure that is now next to another vacant lot that will be developed as another large project. This little structure, singular structure in the middle of those two parcels is unusual and probably not a good planning practice, and so it's contained in the study, doesn't qualify, it still can remain in the area by the statute itself, it acknowledges that it can, it's property will be taken, and the only difference is that the controller that will be controlled by whatever regulation the township adopts for it. And so, we believe that this can stay in the area and should stay in the area, so that it is not this singular lot trapped between two larger projects, that if they choose to, they can become part of one or the other, essentially the new one that's going forward. And we don't know what will happen, or how that will go. At this point, the goal is to try and make something happen, use the tools that the state has granted, you know, the planning board and the council to use, and get something positive from having that. With that, I will conclude. I talked, and take any questions?
Just understand, on lot 4, they're not obligated to participate in a redevelopment of their property. They can choose to sell property.
They just stay as they are. They could sell, they could not sell. There's no one that's going to come in and do anything to them. There's no one that's going to come in and do anything to them.
So all the properties, all the lots, are different owners, or are they one?
There are different owners. There are different owners, and that's common, and, you know, and that's the only way to do it, especially with non-condemnation. I mean, that generally what it does is maybe motivate one owner to buy the other properties, and it provides a buyer for the other properties. So it does motivate things, that's why this is a tool. It makes things happen. But nobody's going to force anybody to sell or to buy. It doesn't go, it doesn't work that way. The owners, the rights of the private property owners remain the same.
Just to clarify, we've heard redevelopment plans before, they're usually, you know, delocalated buildings. This is basically empty land. That is something that has been done in the past in order to move the project forward to declare it an area of redevelopment. So we take a lot that's been vacant for years, and we finally get to see something put on it? I mean, that's something that...
Absolutely. It's done, in fact, there are some redevelopment plans that focus on vacant land, and there's scattered site vacant land redevelopment plans to eliminate vacant lots that are within residential neighborhoods, because that brings down a street and the neighborhood as well.
So we've had plans, you know, plans for this lot before, come before us for years, and we've not seen anything done. So I guess without maybe redevelopment, it cannot proceed or will not proceed?
And that's exactly it. You can't guarantee it, but this is the tool available to try and encourage something to happen. And actually, what you get to do is craft exactly what you want to happen. That's how it works.
Because like I said, we've seen some nice plans come before us, they were approved, it was never built, and I'm sure everyone would like to see something built here, and especially on that end of Washington Avenue. We have the Popeyes, and then there's a large track there that's been vacant and underutilized, and we'd like to see something moving forward on it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Does anyone in the public have questions of this witness? Mr. Frantatoni?
I address him as Ms. Pucci.
State your name and address.
Captain Frantatoni, 129 Lot 3.
Thank you.
Of course, let me preface my remarks, Ms. Pucci. I sympathize with you because it's really a stretch to try to have this designated area in need of redevelopment, but nice try. You said the property is not likely to be developed by private property, though. Are you talking softly, so is that what you said in the beginning? Are you aware that this property was approved for an 80-unit residential in part from a restaurant, I believe?
I am aware of that.
You know it was approved in 2005?
Yes.
You know it came back about two years, a year ago, to lower the building from eight stories to six stories?
I believe that that application provides more support for designated in need of redevelopment because that development didn't happen. And that's exactly what this tool tries to do. Applicants can come and get approvals for things, but if they don't fill them, the town doesn't benefit. And that project was approved over 15 years ago originally, and it still hasn't happened.
No, it was 13 years ago, and it was re-approved about a year ago.
Well, 2005 was the first.
2005, right. Do you know why it wasn't built?
That is not relevant to the issue. It's that nothing positive has happened on that land, so why it wasn't built is really not relevant. It's the fact that nothing's...
I believe it is to the taxpayers.
The fact that nothing there is the problem.
I believe it, it's very relevant, it's been to the taxpayers. You also stated, I think next, you said the site has been vacant for a very long time.
Yes.
Do you know how long?
It's in my report. I'm just not exactly sure, I don't remember the date, but it's been over 10 years.
Oh, 10 years?
I think...
You're saying it's vacant over 10 years?
I think that...
Is that your statement?
I have to look at the report if you want to. I don't know if that's known either, but maybe someone else knows.
Okay, well, at the end, I believe I have the right to make a final statement. I'll make that a play. Now, do you know why it's been vacant?
That's not relevant either?
It's not relevant maybe because you don't know, but I think you're the expert on this. I think you should know the history of this property.
And another business doesn't move into the place, whether it be the same type of business that his grandfather or a new business that's permitted, then it stays in this condition and continues, then it continues to be there. That's the...
I agree with you, but you gotta know why this happened. And I've lived here 50 years, I know the little history. You also stated, there's a small building, you called it a small building on the property.
Well, it's a small structure.
Do you know what it actually is? Do you know how small it is?
I do know how small it is. It's basically a timber block structure.
Is it about only the quarter of this room? Do you know that it was just an office for a used car lot?
Yes.
Okay, so you made it sound like it's this building, you know, that's so important there. Also, you also stated that the pavements, I mean, I assume being the sidewalks, is broken.
And also the pavement.
The pavement of what?
There's some asphalt that's on the property.
Right.
That's crumbled, and there's some tiles, or some dirt, and there's some rubbish, and it's very unhygienic and...
It is unsafe. But isn't that a property maintenance problem?
Mr. Frantatoni, could you summarize or get to your point please?
Well, summarize, she gave her own thing, so I have some notes on what she testified to. I'm entitled to ask you if she testified to it.
Could you just summarize, please? We all know it's vacant, it's broken, macadam, and dirt, and rocks, with a small building on it.
Now, I have the right to question her testimony.
But we know that, you could just summarize it, no, that's all. We don't want to be here all night.
You also said the Williams Street and Duckfield Building is for sale, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And you said there's some rust down the door.
There is nail or, yeah, like a front, there's rust on the base of the hinges and the windows, and there's mold on the base of the stone. The description of the exterior is...
I'm sorry, Ms. Pucci, I can't hear you at all. Can you maybe stand up?
Sure.
Yeah, that will be better. Thank you. You just said the...
There's mold on the building.
The building is vacant, so, Mr. Frantatoni. The building's vacant.
It's an office, it's an old office for a car lot.
The other building you're talking about is vacant.
Yeah, it was a tile warehouse, but it's in good shape.
It's vacant, it's not occupied.
74 Washington Avenue. You claim that don't belong there. Are you aware this, a business that's been in town for a while was up the street by Home Street. He recently moved in there. He's a sign company, he does truck, he does trucking, car raps and all that. He put up a nice business there, and there's a parking there. And the outside of the building is in excellent condition.
And the statute, the statutory, excuse me, the statute of the law that we're looking at tonight permits that building with that use, as you described, to be within an area that's designated in need of redevelopment. It accommodates an active, successful use to be within there, provided that it's essential for and fits within the concept of a comprehensive approach to redevelopment. And in this case, because it is singularly wedged within the large shopping center and is part of the edge of the study area, it does meet that test. And that's why, it can be, and I agree with you, it looks like a brand-new use, it's, the building is well-kept, and the report specifically states it does not meet any of the criteria, but it does meet Section 3.
So if the developer got built, when he was approved, that is a six-story building, that three-story building wouldn't look at a place?
Sure would.
Right?
It's a lot of ifs, but right now, what...
But my ifs are based on actual facts. There is a building there, there is a new business in there, it is in excellent shape, as you testified to.
Exactly.
So my testimony is not based on ifs, it's facts.
But the fact is that the building, the property is vacant, and the building, as you described it, we had it designated in need of redevelopment, as the report suggests.
You also said that the previous used car lot was not permitted in that zone.
It is not permitted in the BG zone.
But are you aware that he went before the zoning board to get a variance to allow him to be there?
And then the business ceased.
The business did not cease. He's in Clinton. The landlord who's building it threw him out.
But he's not there. But he asked and answered.
That's right.
Asked and answered.
There's a reason why he's not there.
We don't care at the reasons.
Because, you know, they can't prove any Washington illusion, but I'm sure here we can prove some kind of collusion.
Irrelevant. Asked and answered. Go on to your next question.
The building, and again, you're referring to that little tiny, my kitchen's 200 square feet, this is not even as big as my kitchen. It's not conducive to public use. I mean, isn't that a stretch? You make it sound like, you know, your testimony with the transcript, with the make it appear that there's a big building up there.
We're all aware it's a small building, Mr. Frantatoni. The last time it became before the board, you spent a half hour or two about the size of the building. Everybody's aware it's a small building. Everybody here...
But you have to ask a question. She has to answer the question, then you can ask another question. You can't make a lot of commentary. You'll have your commentary period at the end. Just so we can move on, there might be people with other questions too.
She addressed a lot of questions on it, addressing each one down the list.
She is. Don't argue with her. Ask her a question, she answers it, move on.
You also stated there were different owners. On the initial redevelopment area, I think it's Lot 6, Kendall, all those lots, were they different owners?
That's one owner.
That was one owner.
Lot 4 and 5 is another owner, and Lot 11 is another owner, so two different owners.
There's three owners, but two of them are the new properties, 74 Washington Avenue and Wayne Street property. The main, the main lot, the big lot, was one owner, even though there are Lot 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, whatever.
Yes.
The building there was, the three-story building is another owner.
Yes.
And the one on Wayne Street is another owner.
Yes.
So there's only three owners.
Yes.
But the main, the main parcel was only one owner on that. Now, you also said that the non-condemnation, going to be a non-condemnation area.
Yes.
Are you aware that that can be changed through developers' agreements?
I explained that. That cannot be changed. The state law was amended so that an area designated for acquisition cannot be changed, for non-acquisition cannot be changed to acquisition. The only way to change to a condemnation area has to go through this whole process from square one over again.
When was that changed?
Cannot be changed by a stroke of a pen, several years back.
2013, oh, thank you. All right, I think that the questions I have for now is, but are we going to have a summation at the end?
Yes, you'll have an opportunity to comment at the end. Are you done with your questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Any other members of the public?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon. Ms. Pucci, I just wanted to ask you about something you said at the beginning of your testimony. You started off by acknowledging that this property came before a board in 2005 without identifying which board was involved at that point. So just to go on record, it was the zoning board that heard this property back in 2005. You then really didn't bother to give a definitive chronology, a history of subsequent appearances of this property before the zoning board. Mr. Frantatoni started to touch upon it a little bit, but are you prepared for the record to tell the planning board and the audience here exactly what transpired with the zoning board in the following 14 years? Because you just, you gave the starting point, 2005, but you never said anything else about what happened with the particular property before the zoning board in subsequent years. So are you, do you have that information? So which, I happen to be a member of the zoning board, and our chair happens to be here as well. So if you're not fully prepared, we can put it in.
I can tell you, I have reviewed the resolutions of approval for that case, and the relevance of that case for the hearings that we have right now is that it didn't get built.
Yes, it's true it didn't get built, but again, for the record, the zoning board heard this property again in October of 2015. Originally in 2005, the zoning board approved the construction of 80 units. The developer came back before the zoning board in October of 2015 with the same number of units, which were approved by the zoning board, but he reduced the number of stories, I believe, by one or two, and he changed the scope of the project. Originally, it was 42-bedroom, 41-one-bedroom. He changed it in 2015 to 48-one-bedroom and 32-two-bedroom, keeping the total number of units constant at 80. And then in October of 2017, he came back before the zoning board asking for a one-year extension, which gave us the impression that he was very close to starting construction, since he had asked for a one-year extension to the project. And that was without asking anyone for an ANOR declaration or eventually a pilot. So, you know, I just wanted everyone to be aware of the fact that as of October 2017, this developer seemed to be prepared to build without involving the planning board, without involving the town council, without asking for a pilot. I'll have more to say about that later on, but I wanted to make sure that you were aware, fully aware of the history, and everyone else in this room, especially for the edification of the planning board members.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Anybody else, members of the public?
Frank Fleischman, 132 Franklin Street. Ms. Pucci?
Pucci, please.
Pucci, please. I'm not sure if he answered this, Mr. Frantatoni. The condition of the property itself, broken sidewalks, trash, rubbish, whatever the case may be, is it your professional opinion that stronger code enforcement or property management doesn't, that doesn't solve that problem? Is it either inter-declaration or strict code enforcement? Do you feel that the designation supersedes any possibility of code enforcement making that property better?
It's not a core issue. It's basically a statute and law that allows the governing body to be proactive and to move forward in eliminating properties, changing those properties, eliminating those negative characteristics in neighborhoods, and making positive things happen. If property maintenance was all that was needed in all these cases, it would drive the whole state this momentous. It's more than just property maintenance, because you could be out there and, you know, finds and follow up every week, but if property remains vacant, it's still a hole in the fabric of the neighborhood, and it's still wrong. And that's what this hearing is for.
Thank you.
Franklin Fernandez, 74 Cedar Hill Avenue. Ms. Pucci, thank you for your explanation. Just a note, I mean, I'm sure there's speakers here, the next time maybe we can work on having that, because I learn a ton just by listening to her, so I will benefit from that. I think it's irresponsible of past members of the board, or for anyone to come stand here, and I, by the way, I'm a resident of Delver for 16 years, to stand here and defend what we have in Washington Avenue, and what we have in the decrepit looking buildings and businesses here. As a taxpayer in this town, it is your responsibility to take action, to avoid this bullshit. Excuse my phone. I don't want to make it flowery, I don't have the many fancy words and length explanations, but for someone to spend 15 minutes... but for someone to spend five years or six years wasting their time trying to build something and not do anything, I can accept that.
That's right.
And I don't want you to accept it.
Yeah.
Well, just a big comment.
Go ahead.
The planning board can approve something, we can't finance them, and we can't force them to do it.
I'm not asking you to do that.
We only can approve the plan.
I'm not asking you to do that.
Sometimes we give approval, the economy can turn down, the banks could deny the developer, a lot of things can happen while a project doesn't get built. That's what we're not here for.
Andy, I know you very well, all I'm saying is, let's do something.
Well, again, we can only approve a plan, that's all we can do.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Hector Troya, 665 Double Avenue.
I'm sorry, sir, spell your last name, please.
Troya, T-R-O-Y-A.
Thank you.
My parents are the owners of 74 Washington Avenue, and I just wanted to mention that they're willing to sell, at this point, for a good offer, they're willing to sell to the developer.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public?
I am the owner of the business, my name is John Belasco.
Spell your lips, sir, spell your name, spell your name.
John Belasco, B-E-L-A-S-C-O.
Thank you.
This gentleman here is my landlord, and we just opened a business on Fall July. We had to do the cold windows, the front door, we did the cold basement, we changed the lights, and now they are telling me that I have to move out. What's going to happen with my business? I spend a lot of money on it.
You're not compelled to move out, and your landlord's not compelled to sell it. That's true. So that's between you and your landlord and the lease you have, and the potential to buy out.
Well, I have five-year lease for the business.
If the developer, if the developer wants to purchase the property and the landlord wants to sell it, then you have to negotiate the balance of your lease with your landlord. So that's all, that's all free-market negotiation, you're not going to be forced to do that.
They're telling me I have to negotiate with the developers, not with them.
No, you have to make a deal with your landlord, and he has to make a deal with the developers.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate you all.
The last thing we want to do is hurt a business owner who came into town and fixed up a storefront. Maybe he'll be relocated to another store. Some money should come to you so that you can relocate your business, that would be normal.
Exactly.
Hector Troya, again. The developer has indicated that he's willing to negotiate with the commercial space tenant.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public have questions? If not, at this time, we'll open it up to the public to see if anybody has a comment they'd like to make. Mr. Frantatoni?
Mr. Frantatoni, raise your right hand, please, please, we're going to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth and nothing but.
I do.
Thank you.
Yes, the planning board members' orders came before you about a year ago, and it was rejected because there wasn't any real criteria that declared area you'd agree. At that time, I thanked you. There's no reason for that. If you look at Lower Washington Avenue was a disaster area. Over the last five, six, 10 years, it's been dramatically improved. Not like local individuals.
Proceed, Mr. Frantatoni.
Are you going to bring some water to them?
What is it?
The, we have national companies, not local, just local people, we have national companies built there. You have Family Dollar, you have Papa Chicken, you have Dollar Tree, you have Enterprise, a car rental come in. None of them asked for tax abatements, they fixed up Lower Washington Avenue. The old site, the type of hardware, next door to the old Carl's, he renovated the entire building, then built three townhouses in the back, all without condemnation or any area in need of redevelopment. The old R&amp;S store, Petusa Furniture moved in, the Carl's moved in there. You have the Imercy Building, which was an old, if you remember, alleged auto body, dilapidated building. He bought it, he renovated, he's got millions of dollars worth of cars in there that rented to the movies. He's known all over the country, he rents cars to all movies, he's got the Godfather car that was in the movies. It's a real asset down there, and he did a beautiful building out of it. This is all without declaring it in need of redevelopment. This is all private capital that has really fixed up Lower Washington Avenue. In regards to redevelopment, a developer, Mr. O'Neill, let me tell you what's really going on here. 91 Perry Street project, it was a fully occupied site. A developer came before the council in 2015.
Mr. Frantatoni, it has to be relevant to this particular address. Like, I know you're telling us about all different addresses around town, but it has to be specific to what's in front of us.
This is relevant.
How is it relevant?
Because there's a reason why they want to declare an area in need of redevelopment. You cannot grant a tax abatement, or as is known as a pilot, unless the area is declared an area in need of redevelopment.
So let's talk about this property right here, not our other property.
Well, that's what they're doing, that's why they want to declare an area in need of redevelopment, so then they could give them a tax break, and we, the taxpayers, are, he's not going to pay his taxes.
But it's not relevant, what you're saying, for our purposes tonight, what we are presenting. So you have to be relevant to what we're presenting, what is being told to us by this particular planner.
Mr. Vito.
You're getting off topic.
Excuse me, I've become the mean for 50 years.
I understand that.
This is very relevant, because it affects, it affects the taxpayers of this town.
I'm going to tell you, you have to keep it, try to keep it relevant.
No, you're telling me that I have to, what you want here, this is the time for the public to speak, and I can speak, and this affects the taxpayers of this town, this project. And by me bringing up another project just a couple of blocks away, when the developer actually said, and the public stood right here, and said he wants to build 158 units originally, right? But in his, I got the transcript of that thing, he is, we are dealing with a but-for test. But for some alliance with the town, such a pilot agreement, this project will not exist. He then goes on to say, if he built the apartments, each unit would have to pay $4,000, $4,500 per unit. Then he says, if we had to pay $4,500 in taxes per unit, he would fail the bank financing test. A bank will not loan on it. So he wants a pilot, so what happens? He don't pay, he only pays about 20, 25% of the legitimate taxes, and every one of the taxpayers, our taxes are going to go up to subsidize it, yet we have to provide every services to that. This project, it's built, if it's built, we, I have no pride to it. I'd like to see this project built with his money and pay the same taxes that we're paying. We just got a huge increase about six months ago, you recall.
As far as I understand, we're not talking about a pilot program tonight. Am I missing something?
Yes, you're missing something.
Okay, tell me.
And I don't think you're missing it, you just don't want to acknowledge it. The reason to bring this back to the planning board is this guy don't want to pay the property taxes. And he wants this declared area redevelopment, so then he can get the council to grant him a pilot program, so he don't have to pay the fair taxes.
But that's not what we're hearing tonight.
We don't, it's not.
Again, that's not your problem, you don't grant him the pilot. You do not grant him the pilot, but you do grant him the basis for allowing the council to grant him.
Well, the council would have to hear that, not us, the pilot program, not us.
No, Mr. Frantatoni, I have a question. Is there any case in which you're in favor of a pilot?
No.
Not serious?
No.
No.
So only as a question, so you just said the bank won't give the money because the numbers don't add up, and that's true, because I've done small projects. So if the bank doesn't loan the developer the money to build the project, how is it going to get built?
It hasn't lasted years.
Because in the develop, the developer said, in the same development, he could build it without a pilot, he just had to build it a little smaller, but they're greedy. But let me tell you what pilots do. Here's a recent headline, pilots steer Atlantic County.
We're not hearing pilot comment, we're not hearing pilot tonight.
Pilots steer Atlantic County towards fiscal disaster. Atlantic City has given so many pilots, the developers are rich as hell, go look at the property owners are getting killed down there, and it's still slumming. All the years ago.
There are other towns, there's other, other towns where it works out well, and it could work out well here too, even though we're not. I, I'm off the record, because I can't take down, I can't hear you. It's a record. Okay, and so, Chairman, can you ask the public to not speak while the board is doing?
Yeah, please, can we have quiet? One at a time.
I have a statement. The risk of being, having it be not relevant, I think, I think this is relevant. In Jersey City, the many, many redevelopment areas, many areas designated in need of redevelopment, in need of rehabilitation. As those projects move forward, not all of those developers take advantage of the pilot possibility for redevelopment of the site. Some do, some do not. It's not relevant at the hearing for designation, because really, this is about the township taking a proactive role and looking to make some better things happen. How those things happen later is up to the council, and other tools within that redevelopment law can be applied, but that's not the discussion now. The discussion now is, do we take the step and do we try and put zoning in place that makes something happen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, this is not an area in need of redevelopment, and we talked about debris on there. There's one pile of gravel that was maybe five feet in diameter over there on the property. So we tried to make this sound, you know, for the record, like it's a big site that's horrendous. It's a vacant lot, and vacant by the owner. The owner made it vacant by throwing out the tenant last year. And the tenant had gone for a legal variance to be there. So it was an existing non-conforming use, and he got proper approval through the zoning board to be there. So the developer created his own vacant property on his own. It wasn't that this was neglect and all that, he's still paying his taxes.
It's just my personal opinion, but I don't think a used car lot is the best use for that property.
I agree with you, and I'm for the project. I'm just glad, I'm for the project, he should have built it 2005 when he's got approval. Then two years ago, he gets another approval, and the reason he came down from eight-story to six-story because he realized that extra story was too expensive for foundations and otherwise to build. So he's still building 80 units, and he reduces to one-bedrooms, which I agree with. And he also added a restaurant on the first floor. I'd love to see it, I've been waiting 13 years for him to build it. But I don't want to pay his taxes for it, that's the whole thing here. I'm not against the project. I just don't want to pay his taxes.
Thank you.
And this is, this is not an area of redevelopment, redevelopment. It is not an area of redevelopment, I don't know how much that can express, huh? This was voluntary on the owner's part to make it appear that way.
Thank you, Mr. Frantatoni.
Not to pay his taxes.
Anybody else have a comment at this time?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon again. Let me, let me practice my remarks by saying, I don't think there's a person in Bellevue who isn't opposed, or is opposed, I should say, to sane and responsible development. We would all love to see that portion of Washington Avenue properly developed. And in fact, that's why, in October of 2015, and again in October 2017, I supported the applicant's proposal to put 80 units on that site. But it was done with the understanding that there would not be a pilot awarded down the road. Now, as Mr. Frantatoni correctly pointed out, your actions tonight are the necessary precursor for a pilot to be granted, and in fact, two of your planning board members will soon, and will likely would, be voting on awarding that pilot. So there's almost a, you know, question there, we're off tangent, but if there's actually a conflict of interest here, which you've got two council members who are...
We've always had two councilmen, I don't know.
By law.
Yeah, but you, I'm wrong, but in the past, having council members, class-three members and the class-one member recuse themselves for, in cases like this, because of an apparent conflict of interest?
No.
So that's not a conflict, all right, but I stand corrected with that. But I think the real fear, and you all know this, what we have is that by granting pilots, this is...
Again, we're not hearing a pilot.
We're not, we're not, we're not having a conversation of this. As I pointed out, when you guys heard this a year ago, our demographers, I'm now going to speak as a trustee, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, I'm just speaking as Mike Sheldon, who's a resident of Bellevue, who happens to be a trustee, with a little bit more information than most members of the public may have. Last year, we asked our demographer, Whitehall Associates, to do an update on some of these potential projects, including the proposal for 78102 Washington Avenue, which at the time, again, was 80 units, 32-two-bedroom, 48-one-bedroom units. Our demographers said that at a minimum, that property was going to contribute 11 more students to Bellevue's school system. Now, it currently costs about $17,500 per year to put each of our kids through the school system, so that 11 extra students, kids, would represent approximately $200,000 of additional tax burden to the school district. Now, with all due respect to some of the members of this audience who are, and I too, I want to see development, but I don't know if they're fully aware that when a pilot is given, in a situation like this, or any other pilot, 95% of the tax income, which is already reduced, goes to you guys, it goes to the town hall. 5% goes to the county, and the Board of Education gets zero. So what happens now, when your pilot is awarded, is that the Board of Education has all this additional burden. We don't have the finances, there's, I know there's the landlord's tax, but not the assessed value.
Ah, there you go, repeat that statement? Yeah, Mr. Sheldon, repeat that statement?
The land, there's still income, there's tax coming from the land.
To the Board of Education.
Is assessed value, which in this case is going to be the line of duty. We do not get any benefit of that, but you have to take into account.
Not zero. One at a time, right?
It doesn't affect any of the state aid either.
You have to take into account if and when, the decision you're going to make tonight and what the two council members are going to decide, what are the pros, the pluses and minuses here? Whatever you get in additional tax income by allowing a project like this to be developed because of a pilot, is that going to be completely offset by the extra burden that current residents are going to have to bear?
We're not here to listen or approve a pilot program.
But you are going to do, this is a, this is a necessary step in getting to, by all that's going to happen.
We have a specific, very narrow focus. Our job tonight is nothing to do, basically, what everybody's talking about in the audience. We're letting you speak and ask questions and comment, because we're trying to be respectful, but, you know, it's not relevant to the job that this board has this evening.
Technically, yes, I understand, I understand, but we all need to be cognizant of what, what really is going to happen here. When the time comes, I'm sure this is going to get approved tonight, when the time comes, when this goes before the council, and you guys are about to approve a pilot, there's going to be tremendous backlash for that. So with that said, wish it well, deal with this.
Anybody else in the public have a quick comment?
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut Street. Board, the planning board, please. When businesses are properly marketed to the general public at competitive prices, the area is being developed, has been developed, continues to be developed, because property simply is not doing anybody any good, but costing money that is non-productive to the property, to the town, to anyone, unless it's developed. So when it's properly marketed at the right price, with the right zoning, things are being developed, and they are happening, and they're happening under market forces, where they're not requiring tax abatements, pilot programs, or anything of the sort. There is no question that for this board, planning board, to find an area in need of redevelopment, you are granting the potential for the necessary tools to grant tax abatements and pilot programs. And so, that is typically the inevitable application of finding an area in need of redevelopment. So the desire is, for the taxpayers, your taxes go up when tax abatements and pilot programs are granted. That's what happens. Schools, funding, buildings, residential, that has a definite impact on the existing taxpayers. So to move forward with this and not be cognizant of that is an injustice to the people of Bellevue.
Thank you.
Do what you will.
Any other members of the public?
Mary Higgins, 148 Great Avenue. I was looking into this, I'm not going to talk about pilot, but I'm concerned... I was looking into this, I'm not going to talk about pilot, but I'm concerned with the New Jersey state statutes on criteria for redevelopment. Are you aware of the eight recommendations here, or actually, the eight determinations?
Just one more.
Okay, you're aware of them. Could you tell me, well, which one fits it? Because as far as I know, there's eight here, and none of them fit. It was, I'm not, I'm not going to waste everybody's time or any more later than number one, for example. The generality of buildings are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, or obsolete, or possess any of such characteristics, or are still lacking in light air or space, as to be conducive to unwholesome living or working conditions. Now, we all live in Belleville. We're all familiar what's going on at South End of Washington Avenue. You have great businesses there. There's no dilapidation, all right? There's no abandoned buildings. I mean, you might have said before that there's a couple of broken bottles, or some overgrown grass on these properties that you're trying to develop, but it certainly doesn't fall under this category. You're the attorney, correct, for the developer?
No, I've, I've...
Who's the attorney for the developer? You? All right, Lady, are you aware of these?
Of course.
Okay, can you tell me which one would designate this area?
Well, I can quote, I can quote from the planner's report.
No, 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 this, they from the, uh, New Jersey statutes. We had a planner testify to that, so if you want to ask her.
She mentioned everyone with the criteria.
Yeah. Excuse me, do you have the same list I do? This was taken off her website. Can I see it?
That's the criteria.
Can I see it? If I can't see it, I'll be happy to lend you my copy, so that we are referring to the same thing and not wasting these good people's time.
If she went through them one by one, this is...
Their criteria, A through H.
You're referring, you're referring to 40 Colvin, call it A5.
Okay, which one, A through H, would you say would make this a blighted area?
Lot six, that's the criteria, A, B, and D, and H.
A, B, and pardon me?
A, B, D, and H.
A, B, C, and H?
D, A, D, and H.
One at a time, please.
Okay.
Let's have quiet, please.
Excuse me.
One at a time.
Just one, this is a side remark. For those of us that are hard of hearing, you have a microphone there, could you please speak into the microphone? I don't know if anybody else is like me, but, you know, and we are hearing, so it's very difficult to be here and say...
You know what I'm going to tell you? This is not question, I mean, we're letting you go, because I know you're not an attorney. This is comment time.
This is comment time, I'm making comments. I'm making comment, comments on the law.
Go ahead.
Number one, everybody knows that area is not in need of redevelopment. It's not.
Okay.
All right? You know it, I know it, and they know it.
We all disagree. That's, your entire opinion.
All right?
Yep, is that your...
You have a couple of empty lots there. I'd like to see redevelopment there, but not at the expense of the public. I mean, you're not up there to grant gifts to developers by digging into our pockets.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon.
Thank you.
Mr. Garde Vasco. Joseph Garde Vasco, 163 White, Terrace. G U A R D A B A S C O. Okay, I'll start off with Mr. Sheldon. Okay, you're talking about apartment house, morgues, kids in the school. People in Belleville have kids, they're going to have to grow their schools or grow no matter what. So, don't, don't say it's because they're rebuilding a six-story apartment house, this is going to ruin the schools.
Uh, we have to have one speaker at a time. I can't have question and answers of the public, so...
I'll, I'll be first, wait a second.
I'm just telling everyone else. You have, you have the voice.
As far as the pilots are concerned, okay, I've, I've recently out of the union, I've sat in board meetings for Bluefield and Montclair, and those, the center of Bluefield and Montclair were developed by tax abatements. That's the only way they're going to get done. They're going to get done by, and let me tell you something, downtown Bluefield looks a lot better than downtown Washington Avenue. You're welcome.
Joseph Belnone, 839 Main Street, Parkman A.
Spell your last name, please.
B E L N O N E.
Thank you.
Just a, a voice of opposition on a positive note. Some, some residents, they don't speak for the, for the whole of the community. It sounds to me like, you know, the Planning Board wants to, to see some development, and I'm all for that. I don't know how anybody could look at that parking lot and say it doesn't need development, or, or can say, what about code enforcement? I mean, what good is that going to do to make it look any better? So, I, I, I'm all for, you know, I'm just, I think I speak for a lot, in fact, I'm on the Board of Directors for Arbor Hills, and I speak, I could speak for anybody in that community. We would like to see development here, and I...
Thank you.
Mrs. Pucci Bar for being battered here, and I think it's really unnecessary.
Sir?
Hi, my name is Ed Cologne. I own Body of Light Sports Nutrition, 394 Washington Avenue.
I'm sorry, sir. That went right over me.
Ed Cologne, I have a business on 394 Washington Avenue, Belleville, New Jersey, and Body of Light Sports, one nutritional items, I'm there.
You're going to speak to us?
In a nutshell. I've been here, I'm a little slow, I'm a little slow as I can. I've been here in Belleville for a hot minute, I won't mention how many years, coming from New York. I've seen absolutely no F-ing changes here. These people, I love his energy, don't get me wrong. I like him a lot. He has a lot of passion, some people may be laughing, but nah, I'm not laughing, I love his passion. But at the end of the day, we need these changes, there's no way around it. I drive to my store every day, and things don't get pretty, what I'm called pretty, until we start hitting the so-called, this part of town. But everything else is like a complete mess, it's horrible. Do I mind paying taxes? Nah, not to build a, I'll do it, I don't care. You've got to stop being cheap at the same time. You, you want nice things, you got to pay for it. That's just the way it is, it's life. You want it, you got to pay for it. I'm tired of driving down this road, it's horrible. Look, look at North Arlington, Ridge Road, it looks sick. It's dope. Look at Washington Avenue, it's horrible. Look, look, my, my, Nutley, Nutley, wait, is it Franklin Avenue? It's all right, I'm not a Nutley fan, I'm a Belleville fan. But you've got to look at that and see what they're doing. Look at, the, the young lady, Jersey City, it's popping over there right now. But nobody wants to come to a party in Belleville, Washington Avenue, look at it, horrible. Look at, I don't even want to, listen, I own two places here, beside my business, I don't even want to stay here anymore because there's nothing sexier on there. There's nothing for my eye, so you're like, god damn, I live in Belleville, New Jersey, Washington Avenue. For the last, what, X amount of years, I've been bragging to everybody, Washington Avenue, pop, 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 really good. Nothing. I'm tired of it, you know what I mean? And, and these buildings, maybe, maybe they will accept more taxes and pay more taxes if they knew what the developments would look like, maybe their storefronts and all that, and they had an idea as to what was going on. But again, at the end of the day, we don't got to pay, there's no options. You want nice things, you got to pay for them. That's it.
Thank you.
I wanted to say a quick comment. There was three things mentioned here. One was mentioned that our taxes was just recently raised. And yes, they were, they were just recently raised. There was comments on the South End of Washington about some type of upgrade going on there. I was just there the other day, I work in town, by the way, it's Manny Lopez, 106 to Pan Avenue. So, I'm here throughout the day, meeting clients and things like that. I have no locations to meet clients with. A lot of times, I got to go out of town to meet with them. I was down there like two, three days ago, and I kid you not, I thought I went to the Twilight Zone. It looked like I was in the South Ward of Newark. The South Ward of Newark. I don't know if you know that area, but 2:00 in the afternoon, they're killing people, shooting them two, three times in the middle of the day at 2:00, leaving them dead in the middle of the street. That's where I thought I was when I went to the South End of Washington, in this town. So, I'm not ridiculous. This, this is my... No, what, what I am saying is, what I am saying is, what I am saying is, I am not putting down this town, I've been here multiple years. No, I am not.
Don't let him interrupt you, let him speak.
No, I am not. I am not turning, I am not. I care a lot about this town. One, they raised my taxes, and this is what I see. So, they're going to raise my taxes so I can see a development, I am more for it. That's all I am telling this board. Thank you.
Good evening, Gustavo Soriano, 478 Washington Avenue. I, too, I'm a business owner, Exodus Hair Studios, located on 478 Washington Avenue. I'm listening to everybody speak, I really wasn't going to speak this evening, but hearing everybody speak, I felt slightly compelled. One, I would never compare South Newark to Belleville, New Jersey. I'm not trying to be rude, I hear what you're saying. I was born and raised in Newark, New Jersey, in the Forest Hills section, that's where I was raised, until I came to Belleville in the 90s. But I do see this very distinct difference. With that being said, ma'am, I, I hear what you're saying, to see, to see South Newark doesn't need anything, like I said, I've been in Newark, and being from Newark, and being from Belleville, you can see what happened to Jersey City, you can see what happened to Hoboken, you can see what happened to Montclair Avenue. And when I talked to my clients, as they sit in a chair, and I said, Belleville is the next to go. It is Belleville's time. If you're going to do anything, Belleville is the next to go. I put my finger on the map in Belleville, and the map in New Jersey, and I said, look at all the places, the next to, the next to, to come up is Belleville. Because if you don't believe me, if you look at Harrison five years ago, it does not look even a slightly different look. If you go by that water, if you go by that water, that is absolute night and day.
I drove down there today just to take a look at it.
Sir, my good man, if you look at that, I worked in Jersey City, I used to take the PATH train. That hub looked like a hot mess. You look at that hub now, it is absolutely spotless, beautiful. I would love to see a, a small little hub happen in Belleville, where people could take the train here, go into the city, just a little thought right there. Sir, your passion is so commendable, and you hit so many quality points, I don't know the exact name, I'll remember it off the top of my head, but he did give me a lot of things to think about, as well as the gentleman right here. But to move forward, we need to do certain things a little bit differently. And I thank you all this evening for giving us the opportunity to come out and voice our opinions this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a safe night.
Sir, can you tell me your first name again?
Oh, I'm sorry, Gustavo, G is in George, you as in Sam, T is in Tom, A is in Adam, V is in Victor, oh, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else in the public have a comment?
Ann Delea, 25 Bellmore Street.
I'm sorry, sir.
Daniel Delea.
Daniel Delea, got it. Your address again?
25 Bellmore Street.
Thank you.
So, I just want to say thank you all for actually taking this initiative, because I've moved to this town with my parents when I was two years old. Now, about two years ago, my wife now, we were looking for a place, a house, to start a family, which we're in the process of, because end of April. But, but the truth is, we had many options.
What can you be happy about?
No, I said, let that be noted.
It's not a problem. It's probably relevant.
It is relevant, trust me. So, as I said, I was looking for other towns, and I was looking around, we wanted to start a home. And everywhere I looked, didn't matter, Lynnhurst, Clifton, it didn't matter, Nutley, everywhere I looked, I said, you know what? This house is nice, but it's not my town, it's not built. And everywhere I went, and we argued left and right, she goes, I don't think I want to live in Belleville anymore, because this town is neglected, that nobody cares, there's no leadership, there's none of this. And I said, you know what? I agree with you. It is lacking leadership. It is lacking certain things. Yeah, maybe it's still in the back in the 1960s and 1970s. I agree with you, that no one is cared, everybody's looked the other way. All my friends, good majority, moved out. But what did I do? I said, you know what, we need to stay. I had a couple of close friends, family still around, I said, you know what, I'm going to stay here. And the first thing that I tried to do is get involved in the town. And the fact that you guys are taking the initiative, that you're actually, and don't even, you guys cannot even sit there and say that Washington Avenue is beautiful, because it is not. It is extremely neglected, and we all know it. And that's what they're trying to do here, for anybody who thinks otherwise, I'm sorry, but I don't really care about your opinion, because you're skewed. So, that is the case. So, I really do appreciate you guys taking the initiative. Ms. Pucci, you took a beating, you did a good job taking that, but I appreciate everything, because you came out with facts, and you are professional, and you handle yourself very well, and I think that's extremely important. And anybody here who acknowledges that, you should, you see where I'm coming from. And I really like your enthusiasm, and there are always going to be a few people that are always going to defy it. Why? Because they're afraid of change. Why? Because they want to keep everything the same. Exactly, and that's the situation. But thank you, board, I just wanted to speak. I don't normally speak, but I appreciate everything you're doing, and good luck.
Ms. William Ralph, 339 Brown Street. It's actually my first meeting here, I'm actually an architect, or trying to be. Some of my classes I took were infrastructure planning, and I don't see a lot of young people here, so I figured I'd say a couple of things. Number one, I don't own a house, or I don't know how that would affect, I don't pay those taxes. I'm looking to possibly buy one, but, you know, we'll see what happens. I definitely do agree with this gentleman here, saying that there's nothing to do around here. Often, my friends, you know, when we eat, we go to Nutley, different places that's not here. I think, you know, a lot of the classes I took is, one of the things about Washington Avenue is that it's definitely, when it gets to the south, it's not pretty to look at. Kind of tend to stay away, if I'm being completely honest, after growing up here, never really go past that, past that point. So, I think it's a, definitely a great idea. Like I said, I'm not an expert, but I do have a background, and I think I, I, I agree with what's happening here, and I think you brought all the facts, so I figured I'd just say my two cents.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nobody else in the public has a comment? We'll close the public portion of the meeting. Mr. Donatelli, you want a summation?
No.
No? If you guys are done, would someone like to make a motion for the, to approve the recommendation to declare the area in need of redevelopment? Have we got thoughts? Just a report. Someone like to make a motion to accept the, the application we heard, the, the report we heard tonight to declare the area in need of redevelopment?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Call a roll?
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Malhan.
Yes.
Mr. Condes.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
Yes.
Mr. Corvo.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Mr. Flaman.
Yes.
Mr. Novorato.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to take a short break, give our staff a, a break. You did a wonderful job, thank you. The meeting is called back for. We have a presentation of the master plan reexa, reexamination report.
So, you can speak into that.
Oh, you want me to?
Yeah.
Speak into this one, can I move this one?
Over here?
Is that all right? Okay.
Okay. So, this is another unusual function. This is a little more unusual, but it's based in the powers granted to the planning board within the municipal law. And that is to adopt a master plan. A master plan reexamination is in this instance. And it is the sole responsibility of the planning board to do this. And so, the overview of this is that the Bellevue master plan, the last one was dated January 2009. It was last revised February 2018. The role of the master plan is a description of the township. And the role of this plan over the years, according to the land use law, has increased greatly in importance. It's been moved the basis of land use decisions and for certain objectives to guide the development within the town, and socially, economically, and all aspects. The elements that Bellevue's plan has is the required elements of objectives, principles, assumptions, and policies. And these standards are used to make standards for the physical, economic, and social development of the township. The other component is a land use element. And the land use element shows the relationship of those principles to land use practices and laws. They deal with zoning, population density, development intensity, and they also have to identify by statute any military bases or airports, and conflicts between all those items. The optional elements are many. Bellevue happens to have a three facilities, elements of circulation, rural housing, historic preservation, and recycling. So, this reexamination is a required reexamination, although one was just recently done. They're required to be done at least every 10 years. And there is a required notice for this procedure, which was undertaken by the Secretary of the Board. This notice is required to be in a local newspaper ten days before, sent to the county planning board, and to all the surrounding courts of the municipality that is available for public review. And if you could put the documentation of all that together and have that marked into evidence for the record, that would be great. It would be A1. That's it. No, I think that's it. Again, I'm going to approach this a little differently than usual. I looked at the Cox book, and the requirement for a master plan and the examination report is that the document is available for public review, which it is.
Karen, can she get a mic or talk, or we can't hear?
Try to speak into the mic a little bit, maybe?
Okay.
How do you hold it?
I can hold it. Oh, it doesn't go up?
It doesn't go out anymore.
Okay. Thanks. We'll get back to where I was saying. So, I lost mine. I try and approach this in a way that is a little more clear, rather than using planning jargon, and just kind of identify what the real purpose of this is and how it affects the township, and what it's used for. Reexamination report looks at specific statutory questions. It has to stay within a certain framework, which is very boring, and I'll read it out, because it has to be. But it identifies major problems relating to land development at the time of the adoption of the plan. And then, it talks about the extent to which these problems have been reduced or increased. And then, it identifies specific changes or assumptions in policies and objectives, form the basis of the master plan or regulations with particular regard to density, distribution of population, distribution of land use, housing conditions, circulation, et cetera, and any changes in state, county, municipal policy, and objectives that relate to those. Basically, you take a look at this, and you see where you stand today. Have the plans, the policies, the regulations that were put in place worked? What has worked, what has not worked? And we were asked to do this reexamination to basically take a more thorough review of the master plan from 2009, take a closer look, and exactly do exactly that. What's working and what's not. And the way that this was approached is, like I said, a little different than typically done. Approached it basically from almost an academic view, where towns that have been successful, cities and towns, there's a lot of books on different development and improvements, and when they happen, and why. No one can actually crystallize exactly why. A lot of factors come into play. But some of the studies basically have really found that there's five different paradigms on when things happen and how good things happen. And usually, it's one, sometimes it's spurred by one incident, or several other things. An anchor institution. There's an anchor institution in a community that, whether it be university, or in this case, a hospital, something that they bring in jobs, they're very stable, they look to grow. They are an asset for that community, and the zoning, and the planning, and the standards that apply to them should treat them that way, and should recognize that. And there can be collaboration between that entity and the township. Another paradigm is having a river, a river frontage. In this case, there's a negative that the highway's in front of it, but it is a positive feature. And other examples of where redevelopment and investment has taken place, there's a desirable, or in this case, an urban fabric, and Bellevue has it, that has a strong sense of community, it has historic significance, it's family neighborhoods, and it's dense, and it's, you know, it's a positive cultural component to it, and you want to keep that, and there is something to keep. So the other paradigm is urban park system. And examples of successful investment to the developments, places that have come back, and given things back to people, and communities that were positive, is where you could take, you know, you basically utilize the park system and take advantage of the open space to spur investment. And the final one is a downtown district where you basically try, you leverage proximity to transit. So if you have access to transit, don't squander it. Look at it as a huge asset, and figure out how you can benefit the rest of the town by that transit. And we approached the current master plan and looked to address all these different paradigms, and see how we can use the current assets of the township, and build on that to make everything better. So the first thing was the easy one, is the park system. There's a lot of open space in Bellevue, but it isn't really usable. And one of the biggest features, the noticeable components of it, is not really connected. There's been examples in different parts of the country where, once these open spaces are connected, whether it be the linear park, or a bike trail, or even if it's an easy sidewalk connection, if people can make a loop walking, that's an asset to the neighborhood. You buy a house in that neighborhood, and you can walk to another, and get to another park, and you can get from where you live to a schoolyard, that's wonderful. And those are the types of things that a master plan should encourage, and identify how to achieve, so that it's always out there in future vision that this is what we ultimately want to get to. Application for recycling comes in, there's a piece of open space that's vacant, but it's near the corridor, we can say, "Look, we're going to build on that, and put it together." There's a possibility for a grant. You can apply for Brienne's money, and say, "We're going to try and build that corridor, and make that connection." The master plan is there as an overall kind of sort of guide to do those kind of things. So this reexamination report adds in the recommendation to connect all the open spaces. The open spaces are in blue, and the green line is the potential. It doesn't have to actually be that way. Ultimately, the master plan would recommend that this be incorporated somehow into zoning. And the council could then proceed to make that happen. And those are the kinds of things that we're doing. So that was the first one that I think is major. Master plan comes with the master plan vision map, which identifies what these changes could be, and what the goals are. The anchor institution component, there's a recommendation to take the Clara Mass area and give it its own zone. Right now, it's in a residential zone, it makes no sense. Everything they do will lead to variance. We're making it difficult for them to do things, and there might be areas where they can do things that benefit the community. From what I understand, they hold a lot of events, food truck events, other things, that there's gathering space, and there may be ways to build on that, and turn that into an even better community asset. Another example upon the existing urban fabric. That's a little bit more complicated. I'm going to try and touch on some of those. Urban fabric and the park system, excuse me, urban fabric and the downtown district. That gets into more the nitty-gritty of zoning and uses. And what, I'm not sure exactly what the best way is to present this, because there's a lot of recommendations in here. There are recommendations that identify changes for some of the neighborhood districts to basically do what the recently, you have a new BG zone that acknowledges that the pattern of development in the township. Historically, the one everybody grew up with, if you've been here for a long time, is a ground floor retail and residential upstairs. Generally, sometimes there's flat roofs, but this is a, and if you look at modern zoning, modern zoning doesn't permit that. It permits a big box, or a retail strip, or something, you know, something different, not that. So those buildings that everybody likes, that everybody grew up with, that everybody's used to, are zoned out. So the whole philosophy of sticking with the urban fabric reverses that, says, "Why are we doing that? We want to keep that. This is what's special about our town, this is what's special about our neighborhood." So the master plan suggests that we try and look to keep those things, to adopt a historic preservation component, and to change the zoning, to not go against the grain of the existing neighborhood. And put zoning in place that allows for more buildings that are similar to those buildings that already exist in the neighborhood. That is, that's the other component of this. And one of the things that I think that I will read, it's the only thing that I think I'll read, is an analysis of the strengths and the weaknesses of the township. Because once you look at it, you look at, try to look at the big picture, and identify what's here, and what you have to try and overcome, then it becomes easier to manage, and easier to handle. So the strengths are that we're located in close proximity to a number of key regional employment, transportation, and commercial hubs. We have two miles frontage on the Pacific River. We have a mid-sized medical institution that serves as a local anchor. We have an exceptional park and open space system within the borders of the town. You have excellent regional accessibility, transportation with the Parkway, and Route 7, Route 21, and now a new light rail station. And access to Newark Penn Station, and ultimately Port Authority, Hoboken, Manhattan, Jersey City. So the weaknesses are that the township's building stock and infrastructure are aging. There's many vacancies and underutilized parcels, distinctive signs of disinvestment. The riverfront is blocked by Highway 21. Advancing and improving the resiliency of the riverfront is important to ensure that there'll be more development, investment in the valley. The Washington Ave corridor exhibits elements of disconnect and disinvestment. The existing zoning is not always consistent with the unique character of the township. There's limited public transportation in some areas, and there's a lack of new housing opportunities, a lack of brand recognition for Bellevue. When people go Bellevue, you want to think of all the positive things that they've done in Bellevue, or what they can do there, and you want to develop that. Jersey City, I could say for sure, I know when I started working there, people thought I was crazy. Jersey City's brand recognition was not what it is today. And so things can change. And there's a need to implement a community-wide vision to make sure that this is, and to find out where we want our township to be. So the master plan that's put together addresses all those questions, the required questions that I stated at the beginning. It identifies ideas on how to approach the weaknesses and advance the assets. And it does so by suggesting some zone changes, and like creating a special hospital zone. These are not designed, and that will take a long time to do. That will involve planning board hearings, public hearings, and council meetings. This is not something that's easy. But it's an idea. It's an idea as a first step on moving forward, because if you want to see improvements, if you want to see investment, and you want to see change, the best way to do that is to try something new. Because if you keep doing the same thing, you're not going to see any change, nothing new is going to happen. And the best part about this is it's a goal, it's an objective, and if it does get implemented, and you try it out, it's something adopted by the council and could be changed. If it doesn't work, you change it, change it back. There's no risk. It's just trying to think outside the box, do some new things, do things that some of these other municipalities have incorporated into their towns and downtowns that have basically provided amenities for the community. One of the ways I look at community development is that the streets are the living room of the town. And so you want to be, you don't look at it as, "I live here, and then everything outside my house is somewhere else." That's part of the community, because you want to be able to walk outside your house, walk down the street to a park, or walk and get a cup of coffee. And that walk is part of your experience, and part of living in the place that you live in. And so the goal is to make that as positive as it can be. So there's a whole litany of potential improvements and recommendations that may or may not be implemented, but they're ideas. A special civilite district that acknowledges the uniqueness and the character of the towns, excuse me, the homes and the businesses in that area, takes advantage of the huge asset of the rail station. Could even have its own identity as well. A special residential district, a medical research district, a found business district where the uses that are permitted are expanded. Sometimes, it's very simple. Sometimes the reason why some of these new sexy uses aren't here is because they're not permitted. And to do them, you have to go get variance. But if the town decides that they want them, then we should permit them. And so there's a lot of things like that. Research and development, pilot-type projects. There are a lot of maker kind of artisanal uses that could be incorporated in old industrial areas. So those things should be listed and should be incorporated. The New Canje District is also looking at doing some additional adjustments to that, because it has been successful. And making the neighborhood nodes that are within the township similar to the BG, but with smaller development. Modifying the RC multifamily district, eliminating the BE commercial shopping district, eliminating the F plant intent district, eliminating the EB district. Basically, those are districts that go against the grain of the township. And those projects that have been built within those stand out, and they don't fit in with the rest. So looking to reevaluate that, and make it fit together better. Provided for changes for open space. And there's multiple of small changes that are listed here that I don't think I should go through. Parking, design, and zoning changes that seem to make sense, would have to be evaluated at a larger meeting, but are something that should be explored according to the master plan. One example, and it doesn't necessarily have to be everywhere. There are some instances where there's vacant storefronts. Vacant storefronts because the building is non-conforming, there are parking variances, there's uses that even though they would be supported, and the township would want them... want them there, would, would still have to go to the Board of Adjustment. But if they went to the next town over, they wouldn't need to do that. So if you had the choice of spending a lot of extra time and money to go through a process that's not needed somewhere else, where would you go? So the whole idea is to look at what the zoning does to either encourage or discourage people coming here and investing here. And so that's, that's, that's what's in this body of this report. And according to the, I guess, the Land's Law and the Cox reports, I'm here to answer questions on that now. The philosophy was that I can give an overview, and then if anybody had a chance to, to take a look at it, I can answer questions on it, and we can go from there. And like I said, no matter what the board does tonight, this is only step one. If there's any action that would be taken on these, there would be multiple public hearings before Planning Board and Council follow through on any, any of these ideas that are put forward. And that's it.
Do you want to move forward to the master plan? Do you have any questions on the plan?
I understand that some of the specifics will be dealt with in a later, later date.
That's right. It's the same document that the subcommittee saw, I guess.
Just an overview provision for what?
Yes.
Any other members on the board have questions? Anybody in the public have questions?
Victor Mafucci, 61 Continental Ave. In the report on page eight, you refer to the Great Lawn, block 540, lots 1 and 2, better known as the Great Lawn, are for open space use as its only principal or allowed use. I'm just curious why you didn't recommend putting that in an open space zone.
Well, right now, it is private property.
Yeah.
And we can, and that, is, that's also part of a redevelopment plan, right? Is that, that's also part of a redevelopment plan?
It's an RGV zone, yes.
Yes, and in that redevelopment plan, it is open space, so it is part of an open space zone already.
Yes, but now we have open space zones, but that is not included. I was just wondering if this was a one?
No, it is. I mean, just because they're designated in one, in a redevelopment area or another, typically, and this is, sounds like another layer, and it, and it makes it a little more confusing, but typically redevelopment plans, if they're adopted in a township, their boundary will be the boundary. And if they have, because usually they get very fine-grained, and they'll have a lot of specific regulations in them, if they require certain areas to be open space, that is not shown on the zoning map. It's within the redevelopment areas regulations. It's in the redevelopment area zoning map. So it is open space, it's just not reflected here. We could do that, that's something that, if, when, when, if these recommendations are implemented, when the zoning map is, is ultimately adopted, they could be reflected. It could be one of the components that the open spaces of the redevelopment plans are reflected on the zoning map, so that's possible.
Now, is that up to the board or up to the council?
Ultimately, zoning is up to the council. Planning Board can recommend it, and, and any zoning that gets looked at will go to the Planning Board first and then go to the council.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank Antoni, 129 Mount Prospect. Is that report available for the public?
Yes, it is.
All right. And to follow up on Mr. Mafucci, we're very concerned about the Great Lawn, because you've stated it's in private hands. The problem with that is, when the county sold it, the advertisement for sale of the seven or eight parcels, that one, they specifically said in the ad that it was subject to a redevelopment zone. The buyer bought it anyway, and now he's been fighting to count for the last eighteen, twenty years to develop it. So if you definitely make it an open space zone, I mean, we want that, that's a historic site in Belville. Many years ago, I lived in North Gatwick, everybody would, you knew you were in Belville when you got to that corner. So can we really protect it by making it an open space zone?
It is, it, it, it already is.
Yeah, it's already designated open space.
No, I don't believe it is.
Yes.
It's a redevelopment zone, but.
No. The only permitted use is open space.
That's right.
It's deep restricted.
Under the, under the redevelopment area. Under the redevelopment.
The redevelopment area is the zoning. It is, it, it's called a separate layer, but the redevelopment regulations become the zoning. And so if the redevelopment plan says open space, it is open space.
All right, but you didn't specifically include it. Can we definitely include it?
Absolutely.
As part of that?
Yes, yes.
Would you recommend that, that to the board and the council?
Yes, it's, it's, it's already in here.
To resolve it?
To maintain it, to maintain it as open space. Yes, it's just not on this map, because this map represents, it has entire redevelopment plan area, but the green, the green corridor goes past. And it connects into it, it acknowledges that it's part of the open space and open space linkage and network.
Well, the citizen grid has spent about 25,000 legal fees years ago to protect it, so it's open space only under the redevelopment thing. What I'm saying is, can you change the map?
It's the same, because the council adopts it, it's the same.
So will it appear on the zoning map? That's an open space?
It can, it can.
Well, you keep saying it can, but will we do it?
Well, that's not, that's not, that's, yes, and based on this, that's, that's a different, that's, that's not something that the, the master plan needs to acknowledge. It's, that's a choice of how it's, the map is depicted at the time the zoning is adopted.
Well, I hope the council makes it definite, because that's one of the little things that the buyer of that property is hitting, you know, he keeps bringing up this legal issue. So we make it definitely an open space zone, not just that it's open space according to redevelopment.
Thank you, yes, we definitely want to keep that as a space, absolutely agree with that.
Frank Fleischer, 132 Franklin Street. Just look at page five, and I had mentioned that this to Mr. Mizel when the, when the master plan was talked about last year. On page five, traffic bottlenecks at key intersections, and he lists a bunch of intersections where there's bottlenecks. I'd like you to add there Franklin Street beginning from the Belville border, going, going east toward the south end, the south end of Belmont Avenue where the intersection is, that gets very, very bad as far as traffic is concerned. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleischer.
Jerry LaGershia, Lake Robeson. I want to ask you a question about what you just said about the open space of the Great Lawn. Because it's privately owned, not publicly owned, doesn't he have a right to come before the zoning board for relief?
Not if it's in a redevelopment area.
Well, that's not what a federal judge and a state judge said, because we had a hearing on that.
I wish Dean was here, but there was a recent court case that allowed a variance from a redevelopment plan, but the reason it allowed that was because the redevelopment plan was adopted as an overlay. It wasn't adopted as a replacement. These redevelopment plans replace the existing zoning.
Were they always that way, or were they were an overlay at one time?
That's how they were adopted. It's very rare to see an overlay redevelopment plan.
The reason I'm asking is because he brought it to the zoning board for a hearing, and at the hearing, he provided us with court statements from both a federal judge and a state judge, because they said he had no, no relief, but he, but they said he could always come before the zoning board.
Yeah, it sounds like, to me, based on what you're telling me, it sounds like the Board of, the Board of Adjustment didn't have jurisdiction to hear that, and it sounds like he's grasping at straws, because.
But I'm saying the judges said he had, he, he could bring it to the zoning board. I didn't say it, the judges did. He, he went into federal court, and he went into state court, and in both their decisions, they said they had no jurisdiction yet because he hadn't gone before the zoning board first. That's exactly what they put in the decision. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Thank you.
Mike Sheldon, 47 Fleisch Street, David M. Mafucci again. Just a quick question about your map. I realize the yellow areas are assumed residential, and some of the color-coded areas, especially the blue, bluish-purple, that's supposed to be open space?
This is open space.
All right. Yeah, I, just so that everyone is aware, that, that middle blue area, that's Hendrick's Field, that's the golf course.
Yes.
And as a matter of principle, that really can't be, as far as I'm concerned, really viewed as open space, because you have to pay to use it, you have to have, you have to have a membership, you have to pay greens fees, so that could never really, correct me if I'm wrong, but unless we confiscated the golf course, that could never really be included as open.
Here's, here's how I look at that, and we try and look at it as taking every asset of the community. The idea of linking open spaces together takes a fixed amount of open space, and once they're linked together, it almost increases them exponentially, because you can get to all of them. So even though portions of the golf course may be private and you can't walk on it, there could be improvements made along the edge and talk to the, the, the people who run that, who need to run that, and make it so that it's, it's more inviting to walk past. It'd be certainly great to have a jogging path or something.
Well, I agree. If somehow, some arrangement could be made between our township and the county to put in some sort of bike paths or walking trails through the golf course to allow community members to use it at golf courses.
That's exactly, and this is the first step, because you could go after funds and, and approach the county and say, look, this is in our master plan, so can you accommodate this for us? So that, that's just provides another asset.
Well, I hope that, that actually comes to fruition, that would be a great improvement for the township. As I've pointed out to the Planning Board over the years, according to the Essex County Open Space Master Plan, for Belville's population, and they do their calculations, we should have three hundred, approximately 300 acres of open space, but if you ignore the golf course, we have only 27 acres, and of that 27, 15 acres are associated with the municipal stadium. So it just goes to show you how precious little space, open space, we have in the township. I go up there in the past, perhaps the Planning Board members have copies of that Essex County Open Space Master Plan, but if you don't, let me know, I'll send it to you, so you don't have to Google it. It's difficult now, the last time I checked, it took me about five minutes to find it through Googling. Previously, I could get it in 10 seconds, but I have it archived, if you would like to see it, just let me know, I'll send a copy. I can send it to Corinne, and she can distribute it to the rest of you if you'd like. There was discussion about creating a new hospital zone, and last year, when the revision to the master plan was being considered by the council and, and the Planning Board, I asked for you to consider one other zone, and that is for schools. Right now, all of our schools are assimilated into just residential zones, like what elsewhere throughout the country. Most other towns and cities have special delineated overlay zones for their schools, but for some reason, Belville doesn't do that. Belville has all of its schools just contained inside residential, so if you're going to start making any more tweaks and revisions to the master plan, I, again, I'm, I'm a board trustee, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but I think it would be in everyone's interest if we could have special zones set aside for our schools.
Okay, I, I, I can say we don't, we actually don't have to amend this plan to do that, because the schools are permitted in the residential zones that they're in, but also schools are exempt from the zoning, so they don't need their own special zone. They can do what they want.
They have their own zone, they're exempt.
Yes.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't allow the, the schools to have, qualify for other, other special programs, to have, have a separate zone.
In New Jersey, at least, they are. In other states, they may not be, but in New Jersey, they are.
One of the reasons why I'm asking about this is, if you may know, the Board of Education currently has a referendum underway. The voters in 2017 approved a $48.5 million referendum to do some really critical renovation work to all nine of our schools, but along the way now, especially starting this year, a number of these projects are going to require variances, and they're going to have to come before the zoning board, so when that happens, I'm going to have to refuse myself. But I was just wondering, if, if there were special zones set aside for the schools, would that obviate the need for our, our superintendent, our attorneys, to have to come before either the Planning Board or zoning board for variances? If, if.
Well, I, I was already told that some of the projects are going to require, are going to have to appear before the zoning board.
I think, I think the way, generally, in my experience, and I defer to council, that there is, if there is projects by the municipality, county schools, county colleges, state colleges, all those entities, even if they're partnering with a public, or a public or a private partner, they go before the Planning Board for Section 31 review, where they talk about funding, and they provide details and site plan for recommendations from the Planning Board, and that's what, that's all that the municipal land use law requires. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Just a, just a point of order, I'm sorry. Will there also be a comment section at this, or is this the whole thing?
This is the whole thing.
Anybody else have a comment or question?
It's going to be some fun.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, first of all, say that this municipal plan, this master plan, is a lot better, in my opinion, than the one that was passed last year. It has a lot more of interest, I think. The idea of a community garden in Silver Lake, I think, is wonderful. I've always advocated something like that in town, so I think that's great. Some of the other things about, you know, wayfinding signs, beautification, sign restrictions, that sort of thing, I think, yeah, I think those, those are really good. Of course, the one thing I have a bit of an issue with is the redevelopment section. I won't go into all my reasons now, but I just wanted to say that I, you know, I find that this master plan is a massive improvement from the one last year, so. It looks like you guys put a lot of thought into it, that sort of thing, so.
Thank you.
I do thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Fleischer. If there's no other comments or questions from the audience, we'll close the public section at this time, and if, is there any summation you'd like to make?
No. I'm thinking, I think I tried something out, that would be a decision plan and the rest.
Okay, great. If someone would like to make a motion to accept the findings of the master plan reexamination report?
I'll make them. Should we move it? I'll second it. I'll second it.
Any, could you call a roll?
Mr. Pino.
Yes.
Mr. Malham.
Yes.
Mr. Conde.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
Yes.
Mr. Corvo.
Yes.
Mr. Gragiano.
Yes.
Ms. Quaman.
Yes.
And Ms. Norovarado.
Yes.
Thank you. We have no further business? Someone like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? The meeting is adjourned.